Everybody, I am going to call our Board of Selectmen meeting for August 26th to order. The time is now 6:02 PM. I'm not sure if we have Carl online or not.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so. And Missy is not, so we're just gonna call it to order. We don't need to do a roll call. And we'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, in your disciple clarity and justice for all.
All right, we have a few announcements. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the chair at this time. Seeing nobody. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the selectman's office. For anyone interested, we say this every, every meeting. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on-
Room full room, so maybe volunteers.
I think everyone here is pretty busy. We do have several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website at KingstonMA.gov. Also check the volunteer-
The service dog is here.
Finance committee, yeah. There we go.
Sitting dog?
I lost my train of thought. All right, town buildings, with the exception of public safety, will be closed on Monday, September 1st to celebrate Labor Day. And this is important. Due to a recent resignation from the Kingston School Committee, the Kingston School Committee and the Board of Selectmen are seeking candidates interested in filling the open seat until the next town election in the spring of 2026. Interested candidates must submit a letter of consideration and qualifications no later than September 25th at 4:00 PM. Please submit your information by mail to Town of Kingston, Board of Selectmen, 26 Evergreen Street, Kingston, Mass. 02364, or by email to PTucker@KingstonMA.gov. All candidates will be interviewed at a joint Kingston School Committee and Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, October 7th at 6:30 PM.
I have a question about that. If someone mails a letter of interest as opposed to emailing it, are we going by postmark? Because we had issues in the past with that time and when we receive it, so I just want to make sure we're clear.
Tricia, how do we handle that?
When is the meeting?
October 7th.
Okay, so if it was postmarked by that date, it would probably be fine as well?
Yeah, I would think so.
We would get it in time to review it, and school committee would be able to review it. Okay, so received by email by 4:00 PM-
On October 7th.
On September 25th. Or postmarked by September 25th.
Good call.
If it's not yet, will that be highlighted on the website?
The date?
Just the, no, the-
Okay, yeah. We just wanted, I just wanted to be clear about the, if they mail it, if we're doing, because it says by mail, I just want to make sure we were clear, because I know we had issues in the past with timing.
All right, and any other announcements? Did we want to have, Keith, did you want to, or have Sean mention any updates about street work, road work?
Sean can probably fill in much greater detail than I, but we've had our road paving that started. Crack shieldings can be starting, I think, next week. We've got some additional roads that'll be paved in the near future. I know that there's a lot of interest in the repairs of the Main Street sidewalks. Those Main Street sidewalks, Sean, I was in the car with Sean today, and he was speaking to the vendor there. We're trying to come up with a scope of work that will make repairs to the sections of the sidewalk on Main Street that are damaged primarily through roots growing through the sidewalk, things of that nature. They'll remove the humps and the, the roots. And Sean will have, Sean's gonna contract with a company to come in and then overlay portions of the sidewalk that are disturbed by the repairs. An exact location of where the paving and repairs are gonna occur, I don't know that we have exact locations yet. But it's just a matter, I think Sean's gonna meet with the vendor again next week, come up with, hopefully a price that is something we can afford. And we expect to have that work done sometime in September, but a date has not been set yet.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, next up is Open Forum. Is there anybody who would like to speak at Open Forum? Will, you are up.
Good evening. Bill Gushman, 270 Main Street, Kingston, Mass. It's not about these sidewalks. Thanks for the update today. But I just wanted to remind everyone that school's starting this week. Remember, the school buses will be back on. There were no more routes. So please take that into advice when traveling. Give yourself extra time, as school buses will make frequent stops on, in the town of Kingston.
Awesome. Thanks for the reminder, Will. That's an excellent reminder.
Yes, and school buses will be especially slow tomorrow on the first day of school, where they're learning all where everyone lives and which buses they're on, so keep that in mind.
Yeah, so definitely think about that when you're choosing what time to leave for work or anything else that you're doing. And then again in the afternoon. All right, next up, we have a room full of public safety, which is awesome. We're-
I feel very safe.
A very safe place. Either that, or we have something really controversial.
We called the whole police force.
We have lots of backup here. Chief, I'm gonna give you the floor.
Sure.
Recognition.
Did he want the, okay. I was like, is he wanting us to do that now too?
Want to meet the dog first?
Sure.
All right, cool. Officer Hurley and his K-9 partner comfort dog Mabel is here tonight.
She's so cute. Such good temperament. She doesn't want to go. Oh, you have treats. Okay, okay.
Hello, everybody. My name is Officer Hurley, Brian Hurley. This is the newest member of the Kingston Police Department, K-9 Mabel. She's just finished her comfort dog training this past Friday through Professional K-9 Services. It's a place out of Middleborough. She is a yellow lab that turns five months on September 1st, so her birthday was April Fool's Day. She is a full yellow lab. Both of her mother and father wear yellow labs, Aries and Apollo. She comes from a place called Pacheco Kennels, which is in Rainham. Most of the local comfort dogs come from that same kennel. She's actually sisters with Pembroke's comfort dog Sasha, one of Plymouth's comfort dogs, and as well as Plimpton's comfort dog Aggie. She's been doing really well. She is a puppy, and bear with us. She's losing some puppy teeth, so she's been pretty angry lately. That's why you might hear her bark and stuff. She's just finding her voice. But yeah, you'll see us around town. She's with me at all times, at home, on patrol. So if you have any events that you think that you may need a comfort dog for, please feel free to request. And if you see me driving around, then feel free to say hello, and you can take pictures with the dog, pet the dog. She's, she loves people, and she's been doing really well. That's all, I think. Thank you.
Awesome.
Can you get a picture of your wife in the Kingston logo?
Sure.
That's probably the best you're gonna get, Will.
Okay, thank you.
Hey.
I'll get a picture later.
I have a quick question. So are you guys, are you gonna bring Mabel to the, to the schools? I know we, they've done that in the past, like during exams, that kind of thing.
So I am NASRO certified, which is the National Association of School Resource Officers.
Yeah.
I am currently as the backup role. We have a full-time high school, middle school, and then obviously Officer Tim covers KES, KIS, and Sacred Heart. So I'm in the position where I don't have to backfill a spot at a certain school. I can kind of just go anywhere, anytime that they request us, or just on my own while I'm working patrol. If I want to stop in any of the schools, I'm sure that they would, would love that.
Oh yeah, that's great.
Yeah, for sure.
Welcome, Mabel.
So this time I'm gonna be recognizing members of the department. Officer Patricus, Lieutenant Scavera, Dispatcher Odell, and Officer Hurley. Just to add to what Officer Hurley was saying, Bridgewater University right now is doing a study to gauge the effects of the use of dogs in an educational environment and the positive effects that they're having on, on students in this environment. So they're gonna do like a statistical analysis of the effects of that over time, and that's, Bridgewater is working with the district attorney right now. Okay. The Kingston Police Department has a police commendation award, and this award is established for law enforcement personnel that recognize credibility in the acts, credible acts in the line of duty, the acts that result in the prevention or solution of crimes, where circumstances do not merit issuance of other awards. Variables for this include initiative, persistence, excellence in police work, accomplishment, teamwork, and competence. Recipients of this award will receive a written citation and a uniform ribbon. I don't have any ribbons, so I owe all of you a ribbon. On July 30th, a call was received from a resident reporting that it appeared that somebody was attempt, in their yard and was attempting to do something. That something ended up being the theft of a jet ski and a trailer. In route to the call, Officer Patricus observed a truck with the lights off. That, he turned around and followed the vehicle. A pursuit ensued, which went all the way down Route 3 into the Rotary. On the, and then it continued down Route 25, and it ended up terminating in New Bedford. Police pursuits are very unpredictable. They're very dangerous. In this case, disfollowed the policy by the numbers. Thankfully, nobody was hurt. A piece of either a rotor or something fell off of the vehicle and struck the windshield on the top end of it. One suspect was apprehended. Can I borrow your citation so I can read from it? So each person here is being recognized for your actions on July 30th, 2025, in response to a felony incident involving a police pursuit, stolen truck, trailer, and jet ski that ended in New Bedford and resulted in the apprehension of a suspect. Your actions reflect great credit upon yourself, the department, and maintain the highest traditions of law enforcement. Congratulations on a job. Well done.
Can you, can you guys hold board open, your certificates, please? Can you hold the board up there, damn it? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Will.
Nice job, guys.
Can we have Glenn Kivicki and Tom Taylor, guys, please? So we, we're gonna attempt to recognize a couple of civilians with the Civilian Support and Service Award for their involvement in this rescue that happened. Neither of them was available. This incident took place on July 21, 2025, at 10:30 in the morning. The Kingston Police received a 911 call from a resident, 17 Jones River Drive, reporting a potty yelling for help and seeing that the potty in the river was in an overturned kayak. The resident, Ms. Fantoni, was the caller from 17 Jones River and indicated that her husband, Tom Connor, was attempting to assist this person in the water behind her house. Officer McDonald was dispatched along with the Kingston Fire and Rescue. Kingston habber master Tom Taylor was contacted regarding a water emergency in the Jones River. He indicated that the assistant habber master Glenn Kivicki and him would be launching the habber master boat to rescue this person. Sergeant Patricus, along with Officer Hagenasser and Officer Neal responded to this area. Upon their arrival in the Adena, they observed the habber master's boat speeding up the Jones River in a safe manner with blue emergency lights on towards the location of the distressed kayaker. Mr. Connor had taken the kayak to go assist the, the person in the water. Mr. Connor was able to reach the person and help him stay afloat above the water until the rescue arrived on scene. In short, this, this kayak was tangled in fishing line, and I believe it was his own fishing line. Does that sound right? So it's for those reasons that the Kingston Police Department is recognizing you both with a police commendation for your actions on July 1, 2025, in response to a water rescue involved in the overturn boat. Your actions reflect great credit upon yourself, the department, and maintain the high traditions of law enforcement, and quite possibly saved a life that day. Congratulations to both of you on a job well done.
There you go. Thank you.
Thanks, Will. Thank you, fellas. There was one that we asked to have pulled from the agenda due to unforeseen emergency, and we're gonna move that one to September. And then we had the acceptance of the donation. I think that was-
Yeah, we can, we can do that out of term. We have that under additional items. An acceptance of donation. Yeah, are you doing the mission statement and core values first, or?
Sure.
Okay.
So I think there was some things that were probably expected of me when I was brought here about, you know, changing the trajectory of the department a bit. Without having the proper sense of purpose and identifying who we are as a group, it becomes unclear. So this time last year, we established the Kingston Police Department's core values, and they are integrity, community, professionalism, and service. And we did that not just by me coming along and saying, hey, these are the four core values, and that's it. Every member of the department had the opportunity to weigh in on certain key words that identify us. We started out with an objective of three. Three and four were a tie. Three and four were a tie, and people had the opportunity to weigh in on the things that identify us. After a command staff meeting about a month ago, a small group was tasked with the objective of making the mission statement of the Kingston Police Department. And the mission statement is that the Kingston Police Department, guided by integrity, professionalism, service, and a deep commitment to the community, partners with the public to serve, support, and protect all inhabitants of the town of Kingston. Our core values are integrity, professionalism, service, and community. Integrity means that we should be open and transparent in all things that we do. We have the ability to value, we have the ability in this value to hold ourselves accountable before holding others accountable. We hold ourselves to a higher standard because that is what our constituents expect. Community, we are the public and we cannot do this job without you. We are interwoven with this community, and we will engage with our community. Professionalism, policing is a profession. It requires education, training, certification, compliance with federal, state, and local laws, as well as the tacit understanding of those laws, codes, regulations, and guiding case precedents in both the United States Constitution and the Massachusetts Declaration of Rights. Service, we are law enforcement officers, dispatchers, administrators, leaders, and public servants. In service, we will work to support the community, serve others, and protect the public's rights and interests. So this plaque is gonna be hung in the Kingston Police Department lobby. I'm gonna hand it off to you, Trish, and then you can send it right on down to the end of the table.
All right, and what we're gonna do, we're gonna take an item out of order. It's under our additional items, acceptance of a donation. Police Department, oh, this is nice. And I can read it without glasses.
That's because it's not in my penmanship, so there's a fighting chance.
I'm telling you, it's getting harder to read. And I refuse to wear glasses, so anyways. We do have a donation. The Police Department received a donation from Plymouth County District Attorney Tim Cruz that included a Life Pack 1000 AED wall mounting case and two Naylock's boxes, which are Narcan. These items will be provided to the Recreation Department. Chief, anything to add before we make a motion?
Yeah, I mean, the district attorney of this county is very engaging. He's a valuable partner. We enforce, he adjudicates. It's that simple. He's got federal resources where he's trying to provide as much as he can to the local constituents that he serves, and it's something that we greatly appreciate.
Perfect. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen accept the donation of a Life Pack 1000 AED wall mounting case and twin Naylock's boxes from Plymouth County District Attorney.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to the district attorney.
Chief, did you, could I just ask one quick question? I apologize if I wasn't paying attention. Did you mention that it's gonna be donated to the Recreation Department and hung at the Reed?
Yes.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, chief. And thank you to all the members of our Police Department. All right.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay.
Please stay.
Don't worry, it's recorded. You can watch it later. She said I will. Do you wanna give a two-minute recess?
Yeah, we're gonna do a two-minute recess.
Just to let them clear.
We are going to skip number two, and we're gonna go to number three. Our consideration and approval of a one-day liquor license for the library event on Sunday, September 14th, at the Kingston Public Library. The Kingston Library Foundation is requesting a one-day liquor license for the library event they're holding on the 14th in the parking lot of the Kingston Public Library. Both the police and fire departments have reviewed and signed off on the licenses. Are there any questions, comments?
Do they wanna speak about the event at all or sell it to the public at all? You don't have to, but figured you have the opportunity. Yeah.
It's a great event. Is this the third?
This is our third, yes. Debbie Gray, Six Pine Ridge Lane.
Jessica Bistril, 145 Summer Street. So I am the former chair of the foundation. Jess is now the new chair of the foundation. But yes, this is our third event. Last year, when we did it in 2022, it was almost, it was close to a sellout. We're hoping the same for this year. We have 10 breweries that are coming to this event. We have a local Kingston band, The Shedheads, that are playing. They're all parents. I won't state their ages, but they're parents, and they will be there. All of these people are donating their services to us to benefit the library. It's a great event. We have, the support from the business community has been absolutely amazing. We have tons of raffles. Ticket prices go up September 1st, $10 a ticket. So if you haven't gotten your ticket yet, I would recommend getting it before. But if you also want to give us more money, you can buy it after September 1st.
Excellent. Sounds like a good time. Any questions or comments or motions?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the following one-day liquor licenses for the library event on Sunday, September 14th, 2025, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Does Kingston Library Trustees, you get your own license? Doesn't sound right. Really? Oh, okay. Kingston Library Trustees, 42nd Brew Co., Independent Fermentations Brewing LLC, Mayflower Brewing Co.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. We have a special brew that has been brewed by one of the breweries just for us that will bear the Kingston Public Library Foundation seal on it.
Nice.
Might wanna come and test that one. Thank you, guys.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you.
All right, and now we're gonna go back to number two. Proposal to upgrade the existing EV charging station to a Level 2 32A dual-port EVSE chargers. Town administrator was approached by representatives from EVSE Solutions to upgrade two existing EV charging stations located at the townhouse and the Kingston Library to Level 2 32A dual-port chargers at no cost to the town. EVSE Solutions would obtain grants for the charging station upgrades. They would own and be responsible for maintaining the charging stations. In lieu of retaining ownership, EVSE would receive 75% of the fees generated by the chargers, with the remaining 25% being retained by the town. For comparative purposes, the town received $1,132.69 in revenue in FY '25. Is there anything to add to that, Keith?
With us this evening is Ed McQuillan. He works for the charging station company who's looking to come into town. These are not, just to make sure people are aware, these are not the high-speed charging stations. Unfortunately, those are not available through grants at this point. The charging stations that we will be getting are better than we have. They're, say, one generation behind the latest and greatest. They'll replace the existing charging stations, one of them at the library, the second one near the animal control building. The lead time, according to Ed, is about five months. So I'm not sure if they're gonna be putting them in the middle of winter or they're gonna wait till spring when the thaw occurs. But it's, from my point of view, this is a service we can provide the community. I don't think it's a business we really want to get into. Most towns, including Kingston, don't do a great job at maintaining a lot of things where reactive. So my thought was in giving up $750 to, in revenue, to allow for the EVSE to retain ownership and have to maintain an upgrade and care for those charging stations was worthwhile, a worthwhile, you know, giving of that $750, $800. So happy to try to answer any questions. Ed's here if there's any questions particularly if the board has some particular, but to me, it's kind of a win-win.
Any questions? Motion.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve. Is there not public comment on this?
No, it's not a hearing.
Okay.
What, did you have a question?
The, no, the, I mean, as an EV owner, I have an interest in, you know, the chargers that we go into town. They're, and, you know, I don't want to violate rules, but these are not quality chargers, nor is this good for the situation that we're in. And I can go into detail, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna overstep what is allowable here.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to address that. Are you talking about the maxi chart, the Autel maxi charger unit or the existing units that are there today?
I'm talking about the fact that the network in question here, the Loop Network, is widely seen as one of the most inferior networks for charging in the United States. It has some of the highest complaint levels of any other networks. Additionally, we're taking roughly 100K of grant money that's coming from somewhere else to do a marginal upgrade of the existing EV infrastructure that's already in town. We're taking away from ChargePoint, which has a much better reputation. And the chargers in question are not using the North American Charging Standard, which has been adopted by, I believe, 80 to 90% of all vehicles that are being sold in the United States at this point in time. So it's not, it's not, it just doesn't make sense. I would, and I would prefer to see these chargers at new locations versus the existing location where we have charging infrastructure in place.
And I'm glad you brought that up because, you know, we did indicate from the very beginning of the process that we would be able to install these at no cost at different town properties, but it was just decided upon to just rip and replace the current infrastructure because right now, the, you know, the current chargers have a shelf life of about five years old, so they're right there at the moment. So they would just start at some point, start costing the town a little money. So, you know, even if, you know, these are the Autel chargers, and the chargers themselves are quality chargers, the Ali rated.
They're obsolete from the standpoint of charging for 80% of vehicles in the United States. They're incompatible with Teslas. They're incompatible with Cadillac starting in year 25, 26. They're incompatible with Nissan. They're incompatible with Honda with their shiftover. They're gonna be incompatible with Volkswagen.
Is there an alternative? Mr. McMillan, McQuillan, sorry.
Well, yeah, but I, first of all, I'm gonna have to respectfully disagree with some of that. Because I don't, because these units have, you know, they'll be able to handle. Well, first of all, Tesla has its own network. Tesla can't really plug into, there may be one other charging station available, but it's Tesla. But Tesla vehicles have adapters that would allow Tesla chargers to use the Autel charging system.
Right, but the, in an effort to streamline the charging process, many of the big companies, Ford, GM, Chrysler, have all made the decision to move over to the Tesla charging standard, which is also why the Tesla network has been opened up. Level 3, 4, and 5, or 4, 3, 4, and 5 generation Tesla supercharger now available to those cars. This is.
Yeah, and you could install those, but it would cost you several hundred thousands of dollars to do that.
I would disagree with that. You can buy a level, you can buy a Level 2 North American Charging Standard.
I'm gonna interrupt for a second because we didn't really set this up as a public hearing. And it's not your fault you didn't know, but typically, that's why we have open forum at the beginning of our meeting for folks to talk about anything upcoming in our meeting. So, but, you know, I went ahead and let you speak. What I would suggest is that we potentially table this for the other, to a date when both Missy and Carl would be here as well. And then we can do some further digging into this. And I'm sorry, I didn't see.
I appreciate, yeah, Derek, I really appreciate you sort of raising your hand on this, though, because I am not an EV user, so I appreciate your input and questions because it adds additional color.
And yeah, yeah, and I, you know, I don't want to definitely go out of turn serving on the Finance Committee and the Wage and Personnel Committee. I know that we have a way of doing things, and I certainly don't want to gunk up the process. But I just, you know, as an EV owner, I did wanna kind of raise my hand on this.
And Derek, I can't read your phone number. Do you, if you wouldn't mind just maybe sending an email to me? It's ecrone@kingstonma.gov. And reach out, and what we'll probably, what I'm suggesting is that we just table this for a meeting when we have the full board here to kind of go through this. Because again.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm more than happy to do that, yeah.
All right, all right.
Excuse me, everybody. My name's Nick Filori. I work with Ed, and I am one of the owners of EVSE. Derek, you have made, oh, first off, would you mind if I just address some of Derek's statements?
You can.
All right, so Derek, you've made some very perfect statements. So you know, in regards to Loop Network, we are agnostic to everybody. The only charging stations we cannot install a Tesla because they are proprietary to Tesla. So if you guys, if the town of Kingston would like a different charging network, we can install whatever they'd like. Each network has its own protocols. As far as Derek's statement on the charger itself is more of the plug, most cars, if not all, have an adapter. So I am an EV driver, just like Derek. I drive a Tesla and a electric Hummer. And the Hummer has an adapter to charge to the ChargePoint network, the Loop network. And then the Hummer has an adapter to charge to the Tesla network. So when you are an EV driver, you do have the capability of connecting to whatever charging stations you have available. I will also agree with Derek that the rip and replacing of the charging stations that we're doing, it's a rip and replace on the same charger. So that is a, what I call, Level 2 traditional charger. We can also install Level 2 Smart chargers. Now, what's the difference? A Level 2 traditional charger charges a vehicle between 10 and 20 miles an hour. A Level 2 Smart charger is gonna charge up to 60 miles per hour. The Level 3 chargers that everybody talks about, the Tesla superchargers, we could install those, however, the incentive is gone. The incentive filled in 11 months. Those charging stations charge up to 250 miles per hour. Now, the reason why I continue to use up to is because it's based upon the battery. Not only how big your battery is, but how full your battery is. And I'm sure Derek can attest to that. Derek, can you attest to that?
Yeah, and my point was more, and I appreciate you sharing that, and I don't want to take up more of the board's time than this.
Well, I think what you said was very, is very, very good information that somebody from the town is saying, so everybody in the town can understand everything. Because most people are not EV drivers, at least at this point in time. So Derek, I think you've raised something that is very important, and I think everybody on the board should hear. Okay, you are a concerned citizen, so I think that you've brought a very valid point. So I apologize. I'd like you to finish.
And lucky for us, Derek understands that costs are sometimes prohibitive as a member of the Finance Committee.
All right.
So the good thing is, I apologize, let me just finish where I think Derek was getting to. So what Ed has brought to the table is something that our company, EVSE, can install, whether it's. EVSE, can install, whether it's a traditional level two charger or the level two smart chargers. Now, please note that the incentive allows per street address, and we can install either two dual-port traditional chargers at no cost, based upon the current incentive, or one dual-port smart charger. Now, both are dual-port, so if you have one smart charger, you can charge two cars once. If you do the traditional charger, you can charge four cars at once. I personally think, as an EV driver, the traditional chargers, as Derek had alluded to, is passe, because who's got 68 hours to charge their vehicle? I do think that a, as Derek commented, a faster charger is, is needed. But the level threes at this point in time, it's impossible because of the cost. The cost for a level three is upwards of $200,000 because you have the infrastructure, you've got the equipment, and then you have the installation. But we're told that the new incentive will be coming out, so that's something that Ed will talk to the town on as far as different locations where the level threes could go, depending upon cost. But I do believe, moving forward with ripping out the existing chargers to an updated technology is very important. And what Derek is saying, putting more up-to-date chargers, which would be considered the smart chargers, that can charge up to 60 miles an hour, is also very important in the locations.
All right. Any, any other questions, or do we want to table this?
Can I just ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, please.
So Mr. Valori, or Ed, I'm not sure which one, which person is the right person to answer the question.
Yeah, that was Nick Valori.
Okay.
There was a comment made that you could either put in, you could put in two, two types of level two chargers, the, the, the type that's being proposed for us this evening, and then one that seemed to be a quicker, quicker charge than, than the one that's being proposed this evening. I guess the question I have is, the reason we went with the, the charger that we're proposing this evening is, there is no cost. Is there, is there any cost at all to any, any of the other superior charging stations on a level two?
Yeah, so the, that's a great question.
Thank you.
The, the, the level two smart charger, based upon the current incentive, we can install one per street address at no cost. Now, it is obviously caveats to everything. It has to get approved by the incentive. We have to do a site visit to make sure there's ample power. We're going to make sure that the site is ADA compliant, which the two big things, ADA compliant would be that it's a paved area, and the, and the paved area where the charging station is going to be is relatively flat.
Well, Nick, remember, it's a rip, it's a rip and replace.
Well, that's just the one location we're talking, I got the impression that we wanted to know about other opportunities.
So there's two, there's two, there's two locations with the library and the town, the townhouse.
Yeah.
And I guess if we're going to, if we're going to hold, if we're going to, if we're going to table this to, to the September 9th meeting, I guess what I would like to ask is, if we were to upgrade to the other option, level two charger, are we eligible based on the locations? A, and B, is there a cost to do so? From my point of view, the reason we're moving forward this is, is it's an upgrade, it's certainly not ideal, but it's a, it's an opportunity for people who come to the Town Office Building, if they want to charge their cars when they're in a meeting or things of that nature, they can do that at no cost. I don't, you know, I, everybody I think is aware of the challenges we're dealing with financially. I don't think the town of Kingston should be in the electric charger business. You know, so, you know, we're trying to do this at a low cost and provide some sort of a benefit here. If there's an opportunity to get a higher level, level two charger at no cost, then I think we're all ears. If the board does.
I think what he's saying, though, is the, this lower one can charge four cars. If we go with the smart, it will only, it would still be no cost, but it would only charge two cars.
And my two cents would be, we should go with the, the one that charges two cars. Because, again, we've talked, we've seen the income at $1,000 a month, I mean, a year, excuse me. It's not a ton, we're not making a ton of dough here.
Keith, actually, the late, the latest proposal that I had sent was the, the level two super that is going to replace just each one location, was going to have one charger each.
Okay.
Okay, so I would suggest we take this up again on September 9th. All right, thank you.
Very well.
Derek?
Yes.
If you'd like to connect with us, I'd love to be able to go over things. It seems like you are very aware of the town and the infrastructure that might be needed. So maybe some interest to, that we all connect to try to figure something out.
That's good. My, my thanks to the board for, for kind of breaking procedure and letting me speak.
Yeah, thank you, Derek. All right. Next item up is a request from McFarland Farms Development to place a stone marking the neighborhood entrance on town property. Christine Mayorano, I hope I said that right. Oh, good. A resident from McFarland Farms neighborhood is requesting that an engraved stone be placed on town property at the entrance of the neighborhood. A photo of the stone, stone marker was in our, our packet. And in speaking to council, there's limited liability exposure of a vehicle of some kind left the roadway and hit the marker. The interim Superintendent of Streets, Sean Turner, has reviewed the plans and is in favor of the request. Are there any questions or comments? All right. Would anybody like to make a?
Does she want to talk about it, or is she going?
Do you want me to stand up?
She has to.
I think we're all set to, to vote.
I mean, if you want to talk about it, she says to go up there.
Then you need to go up there and just introduce yourself.
In order to complete this project, we need to have some loam. And it was mentioned when I spoke with Sean that maybe there was a possibility that the town would have loam available, that they could give to this project, because the island is town-owned land. If that's not the case, it's fine. We're prepared to purchase loam before we can.
So my, my hesitation respectfully is if I give you loam.
Right.
There's other people I'm going to have, that's going to be asking for loam. It's not that we don't want to do that, so I hope you understand that.
Oh, I do, I do.
I'm just concerned about setting a precedent.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I totally understand that, but I thought I would ask.
I appreciate that, thank you.
We hope, if we have your approval, to move forward in September, have the stone delivered, and put plantings around it. Sean was kind enough to give me pictures of the island, if you're familiar. Do you know where it is? Are you familiar with it? So you know, there's nothing there now. And our objective is to enhance the appearance of the island and, and our subdivision as well. So that's why we're, we looked into replacing the signs that are already there that are in bad, bad shape. And the homeowners that have the signs on their property didn't want to do that. So that's why we thought we would pursue using the island. It wasn't our first choice, but, so that's the history behind it. Are there any questions?
Uh-uh.
The, I'm president of the garden club, and the garden club maintains a lot of islands around town, so it isn't like it's a, something new. We have a lot of islands that we maintain in the town already, so. Okay, anything else?
Do you want to make a motion?
I move the Board to Selectmen to approve the request from McFarland Farms residents to place a stone marking the neighborhood on town property.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
With gratitude, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck with it. I think it'll look very nice.
Thank you, I'm hopeful.
Yeah.
And thank you for everything the garden club does, too.
Yeah.
Thank you for everything the garden club does, too.
We, we try, we try, and we're, thank you.
All right. Next item is Complete Streets Plan 2025 Update. So the updated Complete Streets Prioritization Plan is in the board materials for review. Town Planner Valerie Massard, who has worked closely with Sean Turner, is requesting the Selectmen review and if comfortable, accept and update the Complete Streets Prioritization Plan. Once approved, the updated prioritization plan will be uploaded to the Mass DOT Grant Central website, keeping the town of Kingston eligible for complete street grant consideration. Anything to add to that, Rodney?
Just Val and, and Sean wanted to get up, do you have any comments you want to make, Val? Are you good with, with what's been said?
I don't know if you want to highlight the top 10, or if you want to just?
I think it'd be worthwhile, if you don't mind, if the board doesn't mind.
Sure.
Great.
So, as you said, Mr. Chairman, we've worked together as a team, worked with our consultant, Apex Engineering, and we went through the townwide prioritization plan that we had done last year. And Sean being the new acting highway superintendent, and going through the process of, of just using one engineer for the, because the previous Complete Streets Plan was done by a different engineering firm. So this is consistency using the same engineer that we did the townwide plan with. And so the top 10 right now become a lot about Main Street, Green Street, and then Summer Street, more about Main Street, and Evergreen Street. So what we're doing is, we're focusing on the center of town, we're focusing on walkability, we're focusing on repairs to existing sidewalks and crosswalks. We've gotten a couple of grants already to do some of that work. We've been fortunate to have town meetings support us with $50,000, which we're using to work with the residents to help to design what the streetscape of Main Street will look like. And then we're going to continue to apply for grants this spring and moving forward to implement further design, more detailed plans, once we have those schematics, and then hopefully get into construction sometime in the relatively near future. It's, it's an iterative process and, but there are total, just for the sake of everyone here, there's 52 projects in the list. And we'll update this every year. We're keeping a running list of all the projects that we have addressed or are addressing now. And these are only, the Complete Streets projects are only for town-owned roads, not state-controlled roads. Anything to add?
Yeah, go ahead, Keith.
So I want to, I just want to, I just want to thank Val and Sean for taking the lead on this and doing a great job to get this updated and continue to put us, put the town of Kingston in a position to apply for and be awarded grants. We've been exceptionally successful in that over the last six or eight months with the passage of, of the, the new, the new zoning laws in town. And Val, if, if people want to take a look and read through this, we can post on the website. Where would you, would you post on the Planning Department page?
Yeah, I think I'm going to try in the next month to create a transportation page where we have information. Right now, we have some of our transportation projects up there, like Tarklin and 53 at, at 3A, and like Exit 20, so we can add some of this.
Awesome, thank you.
I, I have a question that may be related, or it may not be, I'm not sure. And if there was an email about this, I apologize for not paying attention. But I, we were given additional Chapter 90 funds. Do we know how that, how, how is that additional funds going to be spent? Do we know yet?
Yeah, the additional funds will be spent on paving, crack sealing, possibly repairing the sidewalks. Val and I also sat down and we had a discussion with Keith about the program we use in town, which was the street scan, now it's city logics.
Yep.
So we're going to purchase that, and that's also going to reassess our roads, our sidewalks, and the ADA ramps. So a portion of that will come out of the Chapter 90 funds to get that up and going.
So does that just put us further ahead on our paving and patching and all that on our, on our?
Oh, yes. Yeah, absolutely.
One cool thing I want to add about the, the new city logics program is it'll have a dashboard that residents and selectmen alike can go and look and see where do they rank in terms of the issues we have in town.
Condition of the roads.
Condition of the road, condition of the sidewalk. And that'll be an ongoing dashboard that we have available for everyone.
So with that, here's a question. So would I, as a resident, be able to either ask you or find out myself? Like, I live on XYZ Road. Will I know when that's due to be repaved or resealed or whatever? What next maintenance, or not necessarily?
Not necessarily. This, that all depends on funding.
Yeah.
This dashboard, though, will help people understand, okay, you're not first on the list, because look at this one, you know, and they can compare themselves. And there's 360-degree views.
Yep.
And very high capture of, of pixelated information to see exactly what we're talking about. It's helpful for us, and it's helpful for the residents and for you, as the road commissioners. And then there's another tool we should just mention, too, that on the town website, did we want to mention that? Where people can report in?
Oh, yes. Yeah, so the other day, when I was talking to Keith and Jana, who started, so there's a, you can go online now on the town website and create like a report. It's on the, I think, the front page, that you can do a work request online. Potholes, anything you see around town that you want to report. They don't have to call the Highway Department anymore if they don't want to. They can submit it online, and as soon as they submit it, I get the email.
Yeah.
And then I can address the work and fix things as needed. So they can report anything. A street light outage, a pothole, a damaged tree, anything can be reported online now. That just started last Friday.
If they report a street light, does it indicate to them to include the number on the poll?
Yes, I believe everything is stated right in there.
Because I know that's been an issue before.
They want the closest location, something like that, it'll be the poll number, so then we can report it to Eversource.
And what's, what's helpful is, a lot of people will, you know, not be, not be sure where to report an out, a street light outage. So now that you've got the ability to do that, we can have Eversource out there and make whatever repairs are necessary to have that street light turned back on, because we're paying for that street light, whether it's on or off.
Correct.
So if you see a street light that's not working in, in town, and you want to take two minutes and fill out that request form, you can do that. And Sean will be in touch with Eversource shortly after that, and we'll try to get that street light back on.
Yeah, I believe that's on the main page of the.
Yep, it is.
The new website. Also, it's on the Highway Department page. There's a few areas you can find it.
It's an interactive opportunity for people to, you know, let, let the public, the streets, streets and parks know there's an issue, and, and they can track where in the process their issue is, whether it's been assigned to somebody, or in, in many cases, completed. So.
Yeah, and I'll have a separate folder set up, so I'll, it will, it will get Mark completed when we finish it. So it's a good tool to have for the town. So on the weekends now, they won't just call over there and get a voicemail, they can actually submit it online through an email.
Any other questions, comments?
No, I'm just very thankful.
Yeah, thank you so much for all this work. Definitely puts us in a good position. So does anybody, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move the Board to Selectmen to approve the updated Complete Streets Prioritization Plan as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Keith, did we have somebody joining us?
Liz is on there.
Yeah, Attorney Liz Lyden from Me, Tal, and Costa is here this evening, virtually. And there she is in the top right-hand corner.
And that's for the?
And she's here for the.
Cannabis.
Discussion on the social equity policy for cannabis.
Okay, so I'm going to read through this fairly quick, and then.
Just the first paragraph.
Yeah, yeah. So on August 11th, 2022, Governor Charlie Baker signed, oh, let me introduce it. This is a discussion and possible vote of Kingston Cannabis Social Equity Policy. On August 11th, 2022, Governor Charlie Baker signed S3096, an Act Relative to Equity in the Cannabis Industry into law. The new law requires host municipalities like Kingston to establish initial policies to promote equity in the cannabis industry no later than July 1st, 2023, or be subject to monetary penalties. On June 29th, 2023, the Mass Cannabis Control Commission, CCC, issued guidance on how to create a model for social equity policy that encourages cities and towns in Massachusetts to consider incentives for increased participation by social equity applicants in their local cannabis ecosystem. I'm not going to go into the, the rest of the details, it's all in our, our handout. Keith, I'll hand it over to you, and then we can introduce Liz.
Sure. Very briefly, from my point of view, this was something that, that was forwarded to myself a while ago, frankly. I don't know exactly when Liz, a while ago was, but it was a while ago. I got an email within the last couple of weeks, just notifying me that the town had not adopted or taken, and taken a position on this equity policy. So I reached out to Liz, who very quickly sent me an email reminding me that she had, she had made, made notification to the town a while ago. And I missed it, bottom line. So I let the Cannabis Commission know that we're going to be discussing it this evening. They were fine with that. This policy is something, from what I understand, and Liz can get into much, in much greater detail, is an attempt by the CCC to provide equity to people who, who are. is an attempt by the CCC to provide equity to people who are applying for, excuse me, cannabis licenses in a community. And Liz, maybe you can give a little more detail about what that means, if you don't mind.
Sure. So this policy relates to the municipality's ability to grant a host community agreement and then subsequent approvals for zoning or building. And what this policy states is that when you're deciding whether or not to grant a host community agreement, that the town will consider social equity as one of the components in granting an HCA. And there's another portion of this policy that is in there under the, let me see, I think it's the third paragraph. There's a second piece of the regulations that you are required to comply with under 935 CMR 500.181-3. And that is, the town either has to create a bylaw or adopt the model bylaw that the CCC put out, or adopt a policy whereby host communities choose to administer a one-to-one local approval process until such time as 50% of the licenses in the municipality are social equity businesses. I've put that third piece in there recently to address the compliance with this without having to go to town meeting, because by putting it in your policy and adopting the policy, then you comply with that next piece as well. Once this policy is adopted, then you would have to create a webpage on the town's website that basically gives a contact person to reach out to for any social equity businesses that are looking to establish a new marijuana business in town. And then you would link all of your applications, including if you have an application for an HCA or Planning Board or Zoning Board of Appeals and Building Department, whatever the steps are to meet, to open a business. You would just basically put a step-by-step process on your website, link the applications, enlist a contact person, then you'd comply with every piece of the regulations.
So I have a question. So I'm trying to wrap my head around this. So my understanding of this, and I may be reading this wrong, but what they're saying social equity means is that we provide, that the CCC's social equity programs provides training and technical assistance to applicants who've been disproportionately impacted by war on drugs, marijuana prohibition, arrests, and incarceration. So does this mean someone who is in jail
Only for marijuana-related offenses. If they had, if they were in possession of marijuana before it was legal and were arrested for possession or distribution of marijuana, then they would be considered a social equity applicant. Or it also means minority and women-owned businesses.
And then we would, not woman-owned, you said minority-owned?
Minority or woman-owned, I think.
Either one.
Have women been impacted by war on drugs? I don't know.
I think it's just they're trying to
Because that doesn't seem to meet the definition. Woman-owned doesn't seem to meet this, that I can see. I mean, maybe I'm missing something. But basically, so if someone was in jail for marijuana-related offenses, then we're supposed to give them preference in a host community agreement?
Or not rule them out as a potential applicant, I think.
Well, it sounds like we have
You have to treat them equally.
A percent?
No, you have to give them a higher score.
Higher score?
You have to give them a higher score.
Yeah. Now, how many?
So I
Correct me if I'm wrong. Let me just ask this real quick, and then I'll let you. Do we have, like, if somebody came in and wanted to open up another store, they can do that right now. Am I right?
We have one. There's only, yeah, we have two.
And we have two, so there were three total. So there's one spot, but we haven't? Two total.
Two total. Two spots, one is full.
You've given out, you've given out a second license, and they have not come in and gone through the planning board process or gotten approval to open a retail facility.
Do we have applicants regularly coming in, or? I'm just curious.
Join us.
Every couple of months, we get a phone call from somebody who's doing their homework.
Yeah.
And I have had at least two people who would fall into this category inquire and the existing special permit for the one available site that's left in town, because that's just the nature of location-based zoning that we have and having to be so far from a school or health
Right.
Anyway.
Yeah, I remember that.
We, when that expires in September, they're not gonna have their license or their special permit any longer. And so we would recommend to you that you put that back out as something that, you know, that obviously someone would need to control the site and/or have an option on the site and go through the process.
Sure.
And people do inquire about sites that don't qualify often.
So if I could, so Liz, I think there's some hesitation. At least I'm hearing some hesitation on the board, maybe about the issuance of a license to somebody who may have broken the law in the past. If the board was not open to approving this sort of a policy, what is the penalty for doing so?
The municipality can be fined for noncompliance.
And how is the fine, do you know how the fine is determined?
So they can collect all of the impacts from the prior year, or any impact fees collected in the prior year. And I believe also, in addition to that, up to $500 for each violation.
So we've been, so I apologize for putting on the spot. The town of Kingston's been receiving, you know, revenues from the sale of recreational marijuana for two or three years now. But I don't believe we're receiving any revenues anymore from, you know, the towns used to receive a certain amount of money as an impact fee, so to speak. And I thought the legislature had eliminated that revenue opportunity for communities. So I don't believe we're receiving any particular impact fees anymore, just revenues from the amount of marijuana that's sold in the community. So and if that's the case, are we talking about a $500 fine?
So they
While she looks at that, I have a question for the board. I looked up other policies that I could find from other communities, and some of them are a lot shorter and just reference this law that was enacted and saying, following this guideline. It does have a policy, but it is much more like, because of this law, we have a policy, refer to that, and we're going to have this process. It's very short. I have, at the city of Attleboro, which obviously we're not a city, but I think we could potentially, it doesn't, from what I can see, and Liz will correct me, but it doesn't look like it's super specific about what has to be in there, as long as you have a social equity policy that adheres to what the regulations require. So I would, I know that we told the CCC we're gonna do this tonight, but we are two and a half years late, or two years late. So I guess the question is, is would another two weeks for us to look at a potential rewrite of this policy be that horrible?
But the equity is not equity? Is that what I'm hearing? That they have to get moved, they get preferential treatment?
Priority.
Priority. It's not equity.
So it can tell you that what's in the plan itself is what's in the regulations. And so everything that's in the plan is required by the regulations. And so even if you took it out, it would still be required. Attleboro, I can't say whether it's been approved, whether their policy's been approved by the CCC, but I do know that this policy has been adopted by multiple municipalities and been accepted by the CCC as in compliance.
I did see that. Many of the communities had this exact policy, as written, which I don't support.
So the other
Yeah, I don't either. As written.
If we have to vote, if we have to vote it now, I'm a no.
I would be in there.
Question asked. Can I ask something? Sheriff Cushman?
No, it's not. It's not open.
It's not open. It's not open for them.
Okay, all right. Thanks, guys.
Yep. So I would suggest, I think Chief would like to speak.
She might not be able to hear you unless you wanna?
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
No, that's a microphone. He just has to come to the, there you go.
Attorney Lyden, is it?
Yes.
Brian Holmes, Police Chief. Nice to meet you. Does this create, this Senate bill, does this create an exemption for convicted felons, even if it's marijuana?
No, I don't think, I mean, I don't believe that this would rise to the level of a felony. I don't think that would be included. This is more about the war on drugs and the disproportionate impact on people who basically were in possession of marijuana.
So it doesn't include distribution?
It includes distribution, but I don't think in the quantities that would rise to the level of a felony. I'd have to check on that.
So if it's trafficking, which is 50 pounds and over of marijuana, that one would disqualify an applicant?
I think that would still be illegal under the current law, in which case then it would not be included in those, that
It's too vague.
Rule.
Okay. I'm not in favor. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
And again, it sounds like the only thing that we're subject to is a $500 fine. Everything else?
I'm saying I think the first fine would be 500. I don't, it says the commission may impose fines against those that are out of compliance or failed to come in compliance after May 1st. So I don't know.
May 1st? July 1st?
May 1st of 2025. You're already out of
Oh, May 1st, 2025. Okay.
So this was, so they've already sent, they've sent out their first batch of notices to municipalities who are not in compliance. And if, I don't know how much time they gave you to comply, but at that point, then you would receive a fine. And I don't know up to what amount that would go to or for how long, but it hasn't, they haven't gotten to the point of issuing fines yet, so I can't say what their practice has been.
Well, we don't have a full board. Do you want to push it off till we have five?
Yeah, we're gonna table this until we have a full board.
It's better to table than have three no's at the moment.
Yep.
Thank you, Liz.
Thanks, Liz. I'll reach, I'll reach out to the individual, the Cannabis Commission, that I've been communicating with just to let her know that the board needs a couple more weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
And if the board has any comments, questions, that Liz can refine the policy that you have in front of you this evening, let us know. We'll be happy to try to do that.
If you could move Kingston to New Hampshire, or another state that isn't quite so totalitarian, I'd love it.
I will say, it's still discretionary whether to grant any licenses at all. That's still in the discretion of the board. So even if you adopted this policy and you don't grant any licenses, it's in your discretion to do that.
Yeah, it doesn't read that way.
That's just case law.
Yeah. I wouldn't be comfortable voting for this unless, unless in the policy itself, it states that in the end, the town still has the discretion of who to award it to. Not case law, but actually in the policy, then I would feel comfortable doing that.
Liz, would it be possible for you to send us the links to any of this relevant information? Meaning the law itself, which I found, but might be helpful for folks who are catching up, since we're missing two selectmen, the regulation, just so that we can read what it actually says? I know that not everybody likes to read law, but count me in the pro-law category. I just want to see what it actually says, so that I can wrap my mind around what they're forcing us to do.
Yep, I can send the advisory that I sent previously to in the
Okay. I have a memorandum dated June 29th. Is that the, is that the one you're thinking of, from the Cannabis Control Commission? Okay.
Oh, that is one of them. I also sent out a couple of advisories on this previously.
No, okay. If you could resend it, that would be really great. I would appreciate it.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, next item. Town Administrator Position Statement and Job Description Review. So we have, should have had in our packet, or at least by emails, the current town administrator's job description. That was from the Wage and Personnel Study. It came from Tina. That was from like 2022. And then also the position statement that Kim started.
Right, so we had the firm that we hired back in 2020. We paid them, I don't know, $15,000 or something. So they created the position statement, which they used as the job posting after interviewing employees, residents, the screening committee, and they put this together. Things have changed a bit since 2020. So my thinking was, we could just edit some of this to make it updated with updated budget numbers, and Keith provided updated numbers, thank you. And updating projects, because some of the projects that were in that initial position statement from 2020 are already done. So, yeah, that's where we started, I guess. And links to the website were obviously updated, so those needed to be updated, because it was the kingstonmass.org as opposed to the kingstonma.gov.
And some of these financial numbers that I put in here
Yeah.
Need to be double-checked.
I was gonna say, it looks like it says $68 million in one spot for the budget, and then $60 million in another spot. So that's one thing I just want to make sure we fix.
And then, I'm not sure that I have the right new growth in FY '25. I have that as 439, but I think that might have been copied over from the last time.
Kathleen says it's close.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe we could have her look at it. Just make sure we have the right numbers. Okay.
But I think this looks good, but one of the items here is the annual salary. So we had in here 180K plus or minus DOQ, but then
Depending on qualifications.
Yep. And then you had added with a salary max, you originally had the 185. I upped it to 200.
I think it can be only what we have in the budget.
So
So whatever we can afford, right?
I'm worried about, you know, we do need to finalize that upper number. Now, we could just leave it 180, plus or minus, depending on qualifications, and leave it kind of open-ended without having a maximum in there.
We had a maximum in 2020, because similarly to this year, there was a number we knew we could not go over. So we really didn't want anyone saying, well, plus or minus, I'll come in, they'll give me 220. And so the search firm said, because you have a limit, you should put that in there. Whether or not we still think that's true, I don't know. But I just want to make sure we're not saying something we can't actually do.
Yeah, so I would almost recommend, unless we think it's a bad idea, to pull out the salary maximum. Just say annual salary 180K plus or minus. Yeah, I think I'm fine. We're just pulling out the max. I do. It's right here.
So you can make the edits live.
I'm gonna change it right now. I'm just gonna pull that out.
So as much as I'd love to wait until we have a full board, this unfortunately is time-sensitive, so we have to get this moving.
So I think the introduction, I don't know if you guys want to, we probably don't need to go through this whole thing.
I want to make sure that whoever needs to check the numbers checks the numbers, so that that's accurate.
I'm also gonna, I had Tina start to take a look at this. I haven't heard back from her yet, but we also need Kate or someone in her firm to go through this to make sure there's nothing in here that's gonna land us in trouble.
Sure.
Also, on page two, the second paragraph, where it says, according to a 2014 S and P report, Kingston has a very healthy economy.
I don't know if there's been one after that.
We don't have one after that. So
You could say, according to the most recent. It's true, right?
According to Kathleen at our selectmen meeting.
Yeah.
Kingston has a very healthy economy. You know, this is, it's hard to say. We have a lot of potential.
I mean, you could just take out that first line, that first sentence.
So
Says, the community has strong budgetary flexibility and good financial policies. Budgetary flexibility, I don't know if that's true.
I would recommend, yeah, let's take out that first sentence. I agree with that. So the community has strong budgetary flexibl, I wouldn't say
I don't know if that's true.
And good financial, how about we just start with Kingston is located about 35 miles south.
Yeah, let's start there. I mean, inflation's, inflation's been tough. We've got a rising cost of insurance. I mean, everybody's facing the same stuff.
Kingston's located 35 miles south of Boston. That's a fact.
That is true.
That is true, which provides employment opportunities for residents. I'm not gonna read through the whole thing, but
I think that that's better, though.
Right.
Yep, and there is a desire for economic development to help fund town services. That is definitely true.
Yep.
Support infrastructure needs, okay?
The important links I have in there, the town of Kingston website, master plan from 2017. Is that the most recent master plan? Didn't we do that?
Didn't we do that recently?
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Oh, Valerie's not here anymore.
If we can just get I thought we got that again in like twenty twenty-four or something like that.
And then general bylaws, I have a link to that, but we just need to make sure these links are, are correct. And then I have an FY twenty-six budget summary. I'll, I'll hand off this document, Keith, I'll, I'll email it to you and Kathleen and Tina
And Kate.
And Kate when we're done.
Let's just check the links now, we're here.
I got those, I, I got them from the website and I put them in here.
And you did, and you, but there wasn't another master plan listed?
No.
Okay.
And then we've got economic and community. Come on in, we're talking about the
Town Administrator
Position Statement, so we're just, we just started that.
We passed over a couple of things to a future meeting, so.
Yeah. So we're on page two of this partic, the position statement. Economic and community development, oh, and we decided where we have the annual salary. It just says a hundred and eighty thousand K plus or minus, depending on qualifications, and then I had added with a maximum of two hundred. Kim had put one eighty-five. I was just
We're just gonna take
We're just taking it out, so we're just saying annual salary plus or minus.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, we don't want to turn people off, but we also don't want to have people come in with unrealistic expectations. So we can get, cut through that fairly quickly.
We also took out the first couple of sentences
Yeah, about the financial position.
On page two, because it said according to a twenty fourteen S and P report, and even though if that's the most recent, it still sounds old.
It does sound old.
Economic and community development, I think that's, that's okay, I don't think we need to change anything. Open space and recreation, that one's pretty solid, I think. And then the current projects, I added a couple under potential projects. So under current projects, we have establishment of a Department of Public Works. Then we have ongoing maintenance on various town buildings, regionalization
Regionalizing study.
Study of the schools which are currently partially regionalized, renovations to local schools. Potential projects is renovations of the fire station on the south side of Kingston. A new police station has been recommended for about ten years, but was narrowly rejected by town meeting voters several years ago. Upgrades to municipal technology, I didn't put that in there.
Right, municipal technology upgrades, yeah.
Yep, and then expanded IT governance, I, I added this in here, because IT falls under town administrators as well as procurement.
I love it, it's great.
So I just added those last two things, expanded IT governance, cybersecurity improvements and digital service delivery.
I like the last one, too.
And then modernization of, and I had chat GPT put those two lines together.
You know what, you could actually do current projects as modernization of like online permitting and other, aren't we doing that now? Not yet, okay, nevermind. It seems like a current project, though.
So, and I think
Modernization of permitting and
I think that falls
Transportation stickers?
That would be
I think it falls under the digital services delivery, too.
I know, you said potential projects, it's really a current project, because it's underway.
And then the last one was modernization of the procurement process to ensure efficiency compliance with state laws and best value purchasing for taxpayers. I mean, that's just sort of unknowing, but it's just all procurement that falls under TA. So we say the next town administrator needs strong communication skills and should be enthused about engaging with the community.
Especially in that tone of voice.
He or she must know how to build collaborative teams, have the ability to motivate others and be able to create consensus. He or she must actively support transparency in government and be dynamic forward-thinking, capable of moving the town to greater levels of achievement.
Essentially, none of that is new.
Right.
That's the same as we did in, in twenty twenty, so.
So on the last page, there, there are some new things under the ideal candidate.
Okay.
I don't, I, I
And you had, you met with, just for everyone's benefit, you met with depart, you went to the department meeting, you gathered some feedback, and you integrated some feedback into this.
I did, I did.
Perfect.
So we have in here, now, it's interesting, the job description from twenty twenty-two over here says master's degree required.
Okay.
Keith, do you have a master's?
I do.
You do, okay. I should have
He wasn't here when we were hiring.
No, I, I wasn't. So in here, we have a bachelor's degree with a master's preferred, but in the job description from twenty twenty-two, it says, it says master. So I don't know how we feel about that, do we want to just leave it as a bachelor, bachelor's with a master's preferred?
So the reason we did it that way
Yep.
Was because some people are pursuing their master's degree and, and it, we didn't want to limit the potential applicants by saying we wouldn't even consider someone. You could be in your final year potentially.
Yep.
It, it could be limiting the candidates, and you could find a perfect candidate who's almost there, so.
Well, so in the job description, it says master's degree or specialized level of trade knowledge in political science, public administration or related field, a minimum of seven to ten years experience. Now, this is all over here, we don't have that in here under the ideal candidate. When I talked to Tina, she had suggested that, you know, she wasn't involved with, with Keith's search, but she had suggested that when we put this out, we then refer back and that we do post the job, the, the, this job description or its replacement on the town website, so if someone can refer to this. And then, because this is sort of a subset, the ideal candidate
As long as this doesn't contradict with that.
I know, well, that's, that's my point. So the contradiction right off the bat is the bachelor's degree with a master's preferred. But I guess, I guess in the end, it does say master's degree or specialized level of trade knowledge, but this
Keep in mind that the town administrator's position is, is different than a lot of other employees within the town, in that there's wage and personnel, there's, there's unions, there's job descriptions in that in those areas. The town adminis, because we don't have a bylaw and we don't have special legislation defining the responsibilities of the town administrator, we built that into the contract. We tried to pass a special legislation to define the role, which did not pass at town meeting. So what we are subject to is, as you negotiate each contract, you're laying out the responsibilities of the job each time. So while we have a job description, you could change the, what the town administrator does in the contract. We were trying to avoid that with the legislation, but
Keith, were you gonna say something?
Just, I guess maybe piggyback on what Kim just mentioned. I mean, I think that one of the differences between a lot of places in Kingston is, there's a bylaw in those communities that identify very specifically what the responsibilities and role of the town administrator is. In Kingston, it's three sentences, maybe. There was an attempt to try to modernize that and include that in a bylaw probably three years ago that didn't pass. So I think what's important, why the job description is important in my mind, in this, in, in Kingston, is that is the, the, the level of detail I think somebody's gonna be looking for if they're interested in the position. You know, the, the, the you know, the document that you've updated, I think is, is, you know, gives a, a nice overview of the community. But if a person is interested in the position itself, it doesn't give them a sense of, you know, what, 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 what's, what are my responsibilities? And so I think here, having an accurate and, and fairly detailed job description is important, because that's what's gonna lay out what their responsibilities are.
Right.
I'm not opposed to it, I just want to make sure we're clear that the contract is really the only thing that we have that defines it ultimately, because it's not a bylaw.
But in the beginning, the, I agree with you, but in the beginning, when we're trying to recruit people, we don't have a contract. So I think this would be, I think this is a recruiting tool, not, and it, it could be turned into a contract.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it.
So
But that isn't what we would post, we would post a link to that if people, yeah.
Correct. So, yeah.
Because this is kind of the, the sale of the position, and that's the
That would be the posting, and that's what Tina said, she said, this would be your job posting, and then you would have a link in here, probably under the how to apply, to refer to the job description, which would be posted on the town website. So I think we've gotten the first three out of the four pages, I think we've all agreed so far on the first three pages. The fourth page, the ideal candidate, is there anything in this list that we either want to remove, modify, add to? I think there actually may be more, and I've just cut it off. If we stretch that, nope, that's it, nope, nope, nope. And, and this box was much smaller, I made it as big as I possibly could. But all of these things are fairly important, some may be a little bit redundant, but you know, we have strong leadership qualities and experience, skilled in financial management, economic development, personnel administration and collective bargaining. Strong communicator, both internally and externally, and an active listener. Provide inspirational, innovative and respectful leadership and be a morale builder. One thing I heard in the, in the department heads meeting, everyone was, was very thankful and very complimentary of Keith and how Keith walks around the building and, and steps into offices to see what, how people are doing, what they need, you know, et cetera. They were, they were, they, they loved that. You know, proficient knowledge of municipal law. This gets back to, and I asked the department heads, I said, what do you guys think of if we had somebody who's never been a town administrator, but they were in business? You know, you were a vice president of fidelity, you know, and they come in. I forget who it was, somebody said they did have somebody, they did work under somebody who was new and came in from the outside, but it's still problematic. And then I asked, what about someone coming from another state, you know, and it's the same thing.
It's not impossible, but it's a different challenge, yeah.
So, can you, I mean, Keith, you worked in New Hampshire, I mean
Yeah, I mean, so most of my career is in New Hampshire, I've been in Mass now for about ten years. There are some differences. The, the lion's share of, you know, the, the dealing, the day-to-day stuff is fairly similar. You know, what's important is to be able to recognize that this might be a little bit different and not be afraid to reach out to somebody who is more comfortable and, and, and aware of procurement law, of, of some of the budgeting differences that Massachusetts may have and, and, you know, things of that nature. So
Right.
Again, it's just somebody who's willing to just pick up the phone and ask another town, another town official or the state. There's a ton of help out there, it's just a matter of reaching out and asking.
Okay, that, that makes sense, and I also, I mean, department heads, I think we're in a lot of agreement, but basically said, try to stick to New England. If we're going out, Massachusetts would be first, New England second, and beyond that. And it was the same thing when we were searching for a police chief.
Well, it's a different, a lot of those other states have different forms of government, so it's, it's tough to jump in.
And, but when we were searching for a police chief last year, our consultant said, you know, A, we want to start here. We had applicants from Florida, because it's a lot of New Englanders who retired to Florida. And, or maybe didn't retire, they actually moved there to be police chiefs, and North Carolina, actually, funny enough. I think a lot of Northerners go to North Carolina and Florida to, to work in a warmer climate and then wanted to come back home. So they at least had lived at one point in, in New England. But instead, we, we chose the chief we did. Made a good choice. So any changes, I guess, my question is, to the ideal candidate?
Nope.
Okay, and then the how to apply, I'll finalize that with, with Tina and
Is a month enough time? I thought it was, but
So that's a good question, I, I would
You can always change it if you really need to, if you need to open the search up again, we've done that before with other positions, right, where we didn't get enough candidates.
I, I would add a month to whatever date this gets posted, so if we don't post it right away.
Fair.
And you, and you could, you know, you, I've seen, I've seen advertisements that say that, you know, the position's open until filled, the first review of resumes will be on this particular date. So kind of keeps it open, you know, it's really what the board, you know, prefers. I think, you know, I believe that if somebody's looking, a month is more than enough time.
Yeah.
Okay.
More than enough time, you know, especially now with, you know, the technology the way it is.
Sure.
It's, you can
They'll figure it out quick.
Very quickly.
Okay, so it sounds like
Can Tina post it, wherever she normally posts?
Yeah, so a lot of times it's posted in the Mass Municipal Association, there really isn't, and we can, you can post it if you want to, there's a fee to do it, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a cost prohibitive fee, I just don't know what it is on the International City and County Managers Association website, that's a national, a national publication.
We could also share it on our own LinkedIn's and things, too, just, just to get the word out there.
Yep.
Because that's, I would say that, that is one of the things that working, that's one of the benefits to working with a search firm, is that they often have contacts that maybe are employed in other communities that they proactively reach out to
Yep.
and almost recruit for you.
Yeah.
So I think what I would ask this board and whoever ends up on the screening committee is that we need to be looking at recent interviews and other candidates and trying to potentially recruit someone who's not necessarily looking, but maybe what if they were reached out to?
Right.
Okay.
All right, so let's jump over to the
Are you good with being the questions coming to you?
Yeah. So I am on to the job description. So the job description, I think we should have this good to go and post, it doesn't mean we can't make changes after it's posted, but I think we need to have at least something up when we post the job position to link back to. So statement of duties, I, I don't know, you know, if we want to go through this line by line.
This was all part of the wage study, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I don't think it's changed.
No, so, and I think it was, it's, it's very thorough, I mean, there's judgment, you know, complexity, work environment. Hard hat required, nature and
Light lifting. The, what were, what were the issues that Carl had about typos and things, was that from the job posting?
That was a different, that was a dip, that was an older job description, yeah.
That was the job posting, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing it without him here.
No, that was a different one.
Okay.
So accountability, we've got all of this stuff in here, occupational risk, essential functions, which again, I went through these, they all make sense to me. Could certainly have Keith go through and, and take a look at it again, but you guys did this in twenty-two.
I'm sorry, I really love this one. Duties are largely mental rather than physical, but the job may occasionally require minimal motor skills for activities such as moving objects, operating a telephone system, computer and or most other office equipment, keyboarding and or word processing. It's just funny.
No, I think this is, I think it's very and we have K S, what they call K A S, knowledge, abilities and skills.
I have no problem with this job posting, though.
Okay.
It looks fine to me.
Okay. So
Has anyone else had any objection?
No, it looks good.
The only thing I would recommend is we just have
Kate?
Keith, take a look at this, Kate, take a look at both the job description and the job posting, and Keith. And then if they're good to go with the changes, then we should instruct, as long as we get the, the okay from town council. If they're suggesting changes, do we need to take a vote to accept like minimal non-contextual verbiage? Do we need to vote again? If it doesn't change the context of anything, I would recommend
I think you could do like, oh, sorry.
I mean, I think you could, again, I don't, not that I get a vote in this, but I, I think that, you know, again, the board chair can have some discretion.
Yeah, okay.
That if, as long as there's nothing significant that's being proposed to be changed, you know, the board chair can just let the rest of the board know, you know, and share a final document once it's completed.
You know, it might be things in here like nondiscrimination, like things like that, that we may have to add into one or the other, you know, from legal things. So I would
How about this?
Recommend, yeah, you got a motion?
I think so. I move the Board of Selectmen approve the town administrator's position statement and job description as amended, which, because you made some changes. Contingent upon the review and approval of the finance director, the town administrator, the HR manager and town council.
Yep.
And further designate Chairman Crone to review any edits in order to post.
So, second me. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. That was
Sorry, Tricia, I tried to say it slowly, I was making it up as I went along.
It wasn't too painful at all. Okay, now, next item related, do we want to estab, we don't have to do this tonight, and with Carl not here, I don't know if, if we want to wait, but as to establish a town administrator screening committee. So we did discuss putting together a working group, and we had discussed maybe potentially department heads, HR, two selectmen, but then we kind of also spoke about just keeping it the Board of Selectmen. Do we want a police chief, fire chief, do we want someone from finance committee? What are the thoughts here? I don't think, I don't think it would be good to have a department head interviewing their potential boss.
I think two selectmen, fire chief, police chief and HR manager.
Two selectmen.
Sounds right to me.
Two selectmen. Say that again?
Fire chief, police chief, HR manager. Did you have an objection to that?
I don't have an objection to, I, my only comment was gonna be, if you did a full board, then everything is public.
Yeah, no, and
And I think, and actually
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
So that's, that was my two cents.
I'm with you.
So do we ask the police chief and the fire chief if they're even interested?
He nodded, I checked. I, I asked Mark, he said he was willing to do it.
He's shaking his head.
Yeah. Yeah, good.
But I did, this is, I think he got it, I leaned back and looked, he nodded, we're good. We got approval.
Okay. Okay.
But the question is, who on this board would like to serve on the screening working group?
Isn't the person who's not here getting automatically nominated?
I don't know. I don't know if Carl has the capacity to do it, but, um, maybe. But I think, just to be clear, I think it's reviewing resumes and us, of, essentially bringing forth a top.
A top candidate.
One, two, or no more than three.
I'm, I'm actually fine doing it again. I did the police chief, um, search last year, and that's still kind of in my head in terms of, you know, what I was looking for, that sort of thing. So I'm fine doing it, but if, if there are two other people who wanted to do it, I'm, I'm happy to step back.
It's going to be a significant time.
Yeah.
Commitment between now and probably.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I would be interested in doing it, but my schedule, every meeting would have to be after two thirty.
Nice part about a wor, a working group too, is that you can do it at your leisure too. You'll be getting, all getting the resumes. You might not have to have too many meetings, because you'll, you'll kind of get the resumes, and what we did in the, our screening committee is we prioritized them into groups.
Yeah.
So they did like a one, a two, and a three. So three was like, really not relevant, doesn't live anywhere near us, never did anything like this before, we're not going to do that. The second tier group was a, maybe, this is a little bit outside the box.
Yep.
And then tier one was that, the, these seem like really viable candidates, let's see how they do. So after you get it down to those piles, then from there, you can kind of have the phone interviews as a group.
We met and we, we met in person here, and we, um, were able to, um, argue why we wanted or didn't want people, which is good, because, you know, you pick your five.
Yeah.
You know, I pick my five, someone else picks their five, and so on. Might be different, but you talk each other into or out of.
Right.
You know, what your choice was. And, and it's, it's great, I mean, it's great to have Mark's feedback as a, you know, public safety chief. He's like, oh, you don't want a guy that does this, or a girl that does that, you know, or you do want, want this kind of a, uh, thing. It was very helpful to have, um, the, the varying, um, uh, opinions. And I think, you know, having Tina's insight on it as well would, would be helpful. So.
I did it last time, so I prefer not to this time, although if, if it needs to be me, I will do it, but.
I think we have two great candidates.
Well, I was going to say, if you want to fight me for it, you can have it, but if.
So he's a little busy, he's got.
I have about forty-seven sports going on for the next three months, so I will do it if no one else wants to, but.
So I guess it's whether Missy or Carl. I don't mind doing it, I just don't want to impact the rest of the working group with a schedule that can only meet, but if most of it can be done offline, then I'm fine with.
Most of it would be offline. We would meet, you know, either by phone or, or Zoom, or, you know, it could be in the afternoon. Or early evening.
Yeah, then I, I would, I would like to be involved if possible. I just, again, don't want.
And I will say too, just because the working group is small, doesn't mean that you're not all open to people's feedback and why not. So feel free, if you have things that you're concerned about, or you want people to be looking for things. I think Keith brought up some, some, um, key points with the job description, so.
Sure.
If there are things that people are like, oh, please make sure you're, you're looking at this, or, oh, this is a red flag, feel free to let.
Okay.
The working group know.
Okay.
All right, so you want a motion?
Sure.
I move the board selectmen create a town administrator screening working group consisting of the following: two selectmen, the H R director, right?
Yep.
H R director, uh, the police chief, and the fire chief. And further, the two selectmen representatives be Eric Crone and Melissa Batton.
Second. All those in favor?
That was fast.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
All right.
I almost forgot to vote. Anytime someone else is signing up for something, I'll be.
So we have a resignation of Council on Aging Advisory Board Associate Member, Deb Bruno. So we just need a motion to accept or not accept the resignation. Can we not accept?
We ask that almost every time.
I know.
I know. I move the board selectmen accept the resignation from Deb Bruno effective immediately from the Council on Aging Advisory Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we thank Deb for her, her service.
Yes, so she was, um, associate member. If anyone is interested in serving on the board and associate member, that means there's an opening.
Okay. Uh, next we have, hey, we have an appointment to, um, Zoning Board of Appeals Associate Member, David Flummer. The office received a volunteer application from David Flummer requesting to be appointed to the Z B A. The Z B A discussed this at their last meeting and voted in favor of recommending Mr. Flummer to the position, uh, and it, and the associate member is a one term, uh, one-year term? So, yeah, one-year term. All right, do I have a motion?
I move the board of selectmen appoint David Flummer to the position of Zoning Board of Appeals Associate Member effectively, eme, effective immediately through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, now we need a discussion on agenda topics for the joint meeting with School and Finance Committee. So included in the board materials is a draft agenda for the Tribe Board meeting, the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and School Committee in preparation for the meeting. Uh, do we have any questions, comments, concerns?
I have a lot of concerns about the budget. Um, no, I think the goal, if we're thinking about what we're hoping to achieve in this joint meeting, I think the goal of this meeting should really be focused on, we all need to be sort of a united front and, and thinking about this together, because we all have varying responsibilities and priorities. And if the three of our committees and boards can be on the same page as to how we're going to approach this year, and the discussion be based around that, because there's no sides, we're all part of the same community, and we have to figure out a way to get through this year together.
So the, right now, the appointments, it, ju, just the agenda says joint meeting with Kingston School Committee and Finance Committee, initial budget expectation discussions, discussions regarding possible override, that's, that's got to be there, and then the annual town meeting timeline. So, um, I think this is a, a great outline for the agenda, and I'm, I, I, I know we don't need a motion, but I, I wouldn't change anything.
If we're talking about potential, um, like versions of the budget, because I think if we're talking about a potential override, we're also talking about, we need to create a budget to approve if an override fails, so we're going to have to create two budgets.
I think it makes, I think it makes sense to do that, because I think it's important to let the public know that if they decide, if an override is proposed, and they decide that they aren't in favor of an override, they have to under, I, I think it's important to make people aware of the impact, the services that's going to have. So people understand as clearly as they can what the impacts are. Uh, Finance Director Kathleen Barrett and I have been working on a, uh, trying to project out a five-year financial forecast to help the three boards, um, based on what we know for growth, uh, what we know for, you know, estimating revenues, um, take, trying to take into consideration expenses. And again, they, they are estimates, um, but we're trying to at least project, you know, if there's going to be a budget impact in fiscal twenty-seven or, or a, a year after that, what that may be based on a number of assumptions. So all three boards, when they discuss things, can have a, a starting point, and we can all agree or disagree on some of the, some of the assumptions that are made, and it's a working document, so it can be refined as time goes on. But, um, you know, I, so I'm hoping that's at least a, a tool for the three committees to start discussions on. There's, there's been talk about, you know, uh, adding staff here and there. I've asked department heads to look at, are there any major departmental expenses that you see over the next five years, um, impacting your departmental budget? And provide those to me, and to provide to me what those, what years those are in. Um, so again, it can be discussed, and it shouldn't be a surprise if, you know, if somebody's looking to do something a little bit differently. Um, you know, the, I, I think, once you have that, one of the challenges, one of the challenges, I think, that, that, that I think is going to be faced, and again, I'm not trying to point fingers, it's just reality. And I've never been on a school side of things, so I don't maybe understand or respect the situation that they're in. There's a budget timeline that's been approved by the, by the voters of the community. It's, it was updated two years ago, I think. Um, I know it's been difficult for the school because they don't have final numbers, neither do we. Um, you know, the, the town of Duxbury submits, it has a, has the first time meeting in, in, in the state in, in, uh, February, in February or March. Um, their deadline to get departmental budget information in is December. Um, Middleborough's the same way. Now, it may be a little bit different because we have a regional school system as well, and I respect that, and I'm not, again, I'm not trying to pick on the schools. Part of the discussion, I think, that ought to occur that evening is, this is the budget timeline. Is there a desire to make any changes? And if there are, it's ti, there's time to put that on the fall town meeting warrant, and we can make those changes. So, um, all three committees can ideally be lockstep, because I think what we learned as a board and a staff last year, when, um, an override was, was an op, a, a potential, uh, had a potential occurring or being presented, was you got to get in front of it, you got to educate, you got to get it out early and make sure people understand what the impacts are and why you're doing what you're doing. And getting a budget in March for half the budget, uh, of the municipal budget is, is not going to allow the community to understand that.
I think what we, the, the big hesitation that I hear, and you, and everybody knows.
I'm hoping you're going to be a bridge between, wait, did you serve on school committee?
I served on school committee, uh, just for those that didn't know. Um, so.
How many years?
Oh, too many, many, many years. Um, so one of the problems with, that I'm hearing more often, um, and I said it myself, is the big, they're huge numbers that, that can change at the last minute. And though, but, but they do know, they, they settled, I'm just making this number up. They settled a three percent raise for teachers versus a one-point-five versus a two. So you know how that, you know the exact dollar amount that's going to.
You can build some of that.
You can build a lot of your budget, and then you can just take the exact special ed budget from the prior year, move it forward with no change or minimal change, and then you can take, um, your kids going to Votec and say, if it was four, because it's like sixty grand, if they go to Norfolk Aggie, that's sixty, seventy grand, whatever it is. So, and that goes, yeah, all of that stuff. So there's transportation, there's the, there's the tuition that, that we have to pay. There's not many, there's usually like three, four, or five kids, but between three and five kids is a big difference. May not seem like it, but that could be a hundred and twenty.
The population shifts every year, and there are things like that.
My point is, they could say, here's our budget number, but, um, the special ed, um, that could change. The regional transportation reimbursement is going to, that, that could be a sixty percent or seventy-five percent reimbursement. So that changes. And special ed, um, circuit breaker changes year to year, but we know that it's often, I don't know, sixty-eight, seventy percent, more recently, it's been higher. Um, but if the state's having a problem, they'll go lower. They'll say it's sixty percent reimbursement. That, that affects you, uh, your budget tremendously, but if they come in and say, we are giving you these numbers based on sixty-five percent regional transportation reimbursement, sixty-five percent, um, uh, circuit breaker, and then no change in the number of kids going out of district, because they think when they give us a number, that's it, they can never go back.
That's the thing, is we change it all the time, even ours.
And we can even, I mean, I said this years ago.
We're going to make adjustments as we go.
At town, on town meeting floor, you can, you could, the school committee can go up and say, I'm amending this budget, I'm adding a hundred thousand because we got hit with a kid, you know, someone going out of district or regional tra, whatever. So I think we just need to build trust with the, the school committee members and the administration and say, give us your best number and your assumptions, and if your assumptions change.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
That's okay, we'll figure it out together. Yeah, we'll figure it out together. I think that's the.
I know, speaking for myself, in the five budgets I put together, one of the concerns I've heard was, you know, the FinCom is not going to be willing to, you know, adjust budgets. And I, and I, again, I wish Carl was here. I know he hated the idea that we went back four and five times with minor changes, but that's not, I, I found the FinCom to be very, um, you know, to work very, I worked really well with them. I thought they were very collaborative, they, they understood what we were trying to do. If there's a reason, legitimate reason, that, that something needed to be adjusted, because again, we were dealing with estimates of health insurance rates, estimates for retirement costs. You know, big-ticket items, and we would try to project as conservative as we could, meaning no worse than this. Um, and a couple of times, they were worse than that. But, um, you know, again, to your point, I think if we can show what the, what the historical trends have been, try to make us, you know, estimate based on those historical trends and, and give those assumptions to everybody, it, it's not going to be perfect, and I think everybody knows that, but.
But, and they knew that. So, I mean, I will tell you, when we would get our first budget, it would usually be beginning of January. They would, they would, the, the superintendent would give us our first budget. And Christine Healy, the business manager, would say, this is based on our estimates, on the reimbursement, all these other things, and she would tell us sometimes what those, uh, assumptions are. Because if she didn't on round two, it'd be like, oh, we're, you know, we just saved three hundred thousand. I'm like, well, no, it's just the regionalization and circuit breaker went up because the governor said she was going to give us more.
Mm-hmm.
You know, um, so it would, it would adjust. It looks like we made savings, it's really just that the, the, the assumptions change.
Well, I think this discussion will be a, a good kickoff to the year anyway, because last year I found out that we, we look at the budgets differently, like we just do. So we're, we look at last year's costs, this year's cost, and what, what's changing? Are we adding someone, are we taking away something? They were looking at the whole, the whole picture, meaning all of the income potentially in reimbursements as well as the costs. And I said, I said to the school committee member that I met with, what if you just look at the costs in the beginning and try to figure out if you want these budget items? There were some issues this year because the, there were some, there was some movement of accounts, and it was hard to, as they say in accounting, tick and tie, right? Right? Tick and tie? Um, so it was hard to do that because things had shifted and been broken into different areas. So it was very difficult to look at one year and then the next year. So that is improving, but that was a challenge for them last year. So I think knowing that helped me better understand what they were looking at. And I think if we just can open the dialogue between the committees, so we have a better understanding and we're all on the same page and looking at the same information, that's better than last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, um, so I, I guess to answer your question, I, I think the agenda looks good. I think we have, um, a good starting place, and hopefully we'll have a new member on the local school committee.
I don't know if this is appropriate, but I don't know if Derek, a member of Finance Committee, has any suggestions for the agenda, or if he feels like it's okay.
No, it, um, it, it looks good to me, um, and look forward to having a discussion. I know it's going to be a, um, an interesting year going forward, so.
They always are.
Thanks for hanging in, Derek.
I've been, I was on school committee since two thousand and six, and every year is a disaster.
The, um, just, I, I think there was a quick discussion, I was outside talking to Kathleen when the meeting started, but, um, the, the superintendent and the school committee chair want to have the interviews for the school committee opening on October ninth?
Yeah.
Seventh. So.
Seventh.
It'll be after, it'll be after this joint meeting.
Okay, and we're doing the, it was September twenty-fifth is the due date.
Yeah.
By four p.m. Just keep saying it.
Hopefully we get lots of people. And if anybody's listening and interested in school committee, you do not have to be an educator, you don't have to be an expert.
You don't have to be a parent either.
No, you just, honestly, we had, um, Sheila Vaughn was on our school committee, I think, before she had kids.
Maybe.
Way back when, when I first joined.
Sorry.
Um, but the point is, I think, you know, it, for, for a lot of these committees and boards, I mean, you, you need to have common sense, be able to think things through rationally, listen, um, debate.
Be willing to ask questions.
Be willing to ask questions, learn, um, and there'll be people there to help you, so.
So anyone who is still watching this meeting.
Yeah.
If you could share that information with everyone you know.
Absolutely.
If not you, then maybe someone you know.
Yep. All right. Uh, next item is update on the status of establishing a Department of Public Works. It's just on hold, as I mentioned last time. Um, I think, you know, bringing in a, a new, um, town administrator. It'll be important to get, um, that person's, um, I mean, there's some things that we can work on before then.
So are we thinking spring, not fall?
Yeah.
Okay. And then my second question, and then not necessarily for tonight, related to the Department of Public Works, is we have an interim superintendent, interim for, uh, foreman.
Mm-hmm.
I want to know how long we would consider keeping someone in an interim position? I think it's, there's a sense of, um, sort of instability with that, just in general. I just want to make sure. I know we had, um, Chief Douglas served in interim capacity for quite a long time. So just want to make sure we have that, we're cognizant of that. No one has said anything to me, just to be clear. I'm just thinking interim is meant to be short-term, so we just need to think about that as we push this out.
All right, um, meeting minutes, we have approval of, of open session meeting minutes from July twenty-ninth, August fifth, and August twelfth. And would anybody like to make a motion?
I move the board except, the board of selectmen accept the open session meeting minutes July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, August fifth, twenty twenty-five, and August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, town administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The facilities department, every year applies for a competitive grant through the Green Community Grant Program that's administered through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and, um, has been very successful in getting grants every year. This year, they're, they received, uh, grant funds to insulate, uh, forty-two hundred linear feet of the foundation and windows, um, that are inefficiently insulated at the Kingston Elementary School, insulate twenty-four air conditioning units, and weather strips thirty-seven doors at the elementary school. At the intermediate school, they're insulating fifty-two air conditioning units, weather stripping eighteen doors, and insulating all the domestic pipes with ASJ fiberglass installation. So, uh, big shout out to Melissa and our facilities department for always applying for and always getting grant money, uh, to, to help with the, the reduction of, um, utility costs in town. Uh, we talked about it a little bit at the beginning of the meeting, Crescent, Crescent and River Streets, um, have both recently been paved. Grove Street is scheduled to be paved on the second of September, uh, next week. Crack sealing is gonna happen, uh, on, uh, Lake and Evergreen Streets this week, as well as Dillingham Way and Old Mill Estates. We had our library technician Kathleen McGoogle, uh, submitted her resignation effective as of August first, we wish her well. And I think it was also mentioned this morning that, uh, or this, this evening, excuse me, earlier, that letters have been sent out to all the property owners on unaccepted streets, um, identifying the improvements that need to be made, uh, prior to having their roads maintained this win- this winter, with the exception of Country Club Way. I've held off on Country Club Way, uh, because right now there's a peer review going on, um, by an engineering firm that's reviewing the, uh, the scope of work that the, the owner of, of Indian Pond Estates has done as part of the agreement between the town and, and Kingston that he defaulted on. They've submitted a scope of work that I, that I respectfully believe is woefully inadequate. Uh, we've hired an engineering firm to do a, um, peer review. We expect that peer review to be back by the end of August, so hopefully end of this week. And I expect there to be, um, a much lengthier list of improvements that need to be made. And I wanted to wait until this peer review was done to ident, to see if they identified any, additional issues that may cause, uh, potential damage to town vehicles or to, to town staff before we sent the, before we sent that letter out. Uh, we had two, um, catch basins that have been paved over, which I guess is typical practice I'm learning. Uh, when you put a fir- a first coat of asphalt down, and you cut that out and, and raise the grates, when the second coat of asphalt is laid, that's never been done. Uh, we believe there's upwards of forty manhole covers that are still buried up there, um, that, uh, could potentially collapse under the weight of, um, you know, winter, a, a, a truck from Streets, Streets and Parks, or, or even a more expensive vehicle from the fire department. So, uh, we, we, we think we've, we're gonna be identi- identifying, um, with some specificity where these forty, uh, drainage structures are. And I, and from my, my opinion anyways, is we should be asking the developer to, excuse me, make the, make more, a more permanent repair to those structures so we aren't facing a, a situation where a truck, um, drives over in a, in a, in a catch basin plate, uh, potentially collapses or partially collapses, causing damage to a truck, or where, in worst case, damage to a resident or, or a town employee. And then lastly, we, again, we talked about it briefly, our Newtown website, that's been, it's been updated, uh, is online. If people have comments, concerns, both positive and negative, we're all ears. We wanna try to approve things if we can, uh, we're trying to make it more interactive. Our Streets, Streets and Parks interim superintendent talked briefly tonight about, uh, the fact that you can now reach out, uh, and, uh, fill out a, a, a brief form, two or three minutes, to tell them that, uh, you know, there's a pothole on Evergreen Street, or whatever it happens to be. And they'll notify him, and it'll allow you to see how that, um, how that, uh, report is, is being processed, uh, through the system. I, I don't think, and again, I ask, out of respect, if you send the same, um, form twenty and thirty times, it's possible on, on Evergreen Street, I don't believe it's gonna get fixed any quicker. So I'd, I'd urge people to try to use some, um-
It's not crowdsourced, uh, road repair?
No, so, and I guess the last thing I mentioned, you know, there's, there's a lot of discussion at the intersection of, um, Main and, I'm having a brain cramp.
Landing.
Landing.
Main and Lane.
Oh, yeah, the curb.
Landing and, and Main. That was a, an improvement that was done by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts after input from the town. It's, it's been meant to calm traffic as you turn onto Landing Road, especially going north. Um, it was very difficult to see when they first put, they first constructed it. There were cones that were put out until today, when the state took those cones away. So we're working on getting those cones reinstated. I will say the curb, I believe, is sloped, and the curb is, it has a very, very short reveal, and that's done intentionally. So if you happen to drive on the curb, you shouldn't, um, you know, in, in a perfect world anyways, damage your car. A typical curb reveal is somewhere between four and six inches, this is a couple of inches. So they've taken that, that concern people have about not ma- being able to make the corner into consideration a little bit. I know it's not ideal for boat trailers or, or somebody towing something, respect that. It might mean that you need to slow down a little bit and take that corner a little bit sharper when there isn't a car on the other side of the street. And I recognize, uh, that there is not a, a more, a, a convenient alternative to get your boat to the Ardina, because the next alternative is, um,
Maple.
Maple Street, and that's not any better.
Well, you could take the next road, what is it, Linden, but that's a ninety-degree turn, it's not gonna be any better.
So, no, so it's, there, there is, you know, the, the better alternative is unfortunately going to Duxbury and coming back. And that's obviously, you know, time commitment and, and gets you out of your way. We understand the situation, um, you know, it, it was done to calm traffic, it was done to reduce the number of large trucks that were going, and we always get sturrode a couple of times a year on the bridge on Landing Road, and that potentially alleviates some of that concern, not just for the height of the bridge, but also the width of the bridge. So there was some thought, um, put into that. Uh, I tried to address that on, on, on one of the Facebook posts that were concerned about a third traffic light, and had a, um, a one-word, um, well-thought-out answer, um, from somebody, and, uh, which is why I don't post very often on Facebook. But, uh, I thought it was worthwhile to try to get the, you know, get some accurate information out there to-
You just need to have a fake Facebook account.
I know, I'm, I'm, I am who I am, and if they don't, you know, I, I, so, um, you know, I, I understand the frustration some people are having, they're used to driving at, at their, at their leisure and, and kind of using it as a, um, you know, almost like an off-ramp, so to speak. And, uh, it's not anymore, and, and just please be careful and, and be cautious, and just change from driving habits we can.
Some folks might not realize too, that in the, the studies we've seen for roadways, that the T-intersection is much safer than the angled intersection, so that's probably part of it as well. And then folks might also not realize that there have been accidents right in front of that house right there, where a car had gone into the stone wall. So we just have to be mindful that sometimes, even though it's a change, it's not completely random.
No, it's, it's not random, I mean, it's well-thought-out, you don't have to like it, I get that, right?
Yeah.
But it wasn't just done at the drop of a, a hat, and, and I, I tried to mention in my response on Facebook as well, there was, there was some comments made, well, let's, let's fix some of the challenges up on exit twenty, we are. Um, you know, we're on the state ten-year plan for two thousand and twenty-eight. The towns of Kingston and Duxbury have submitted money, um, for engineering costs to have that, uh, that roadway and the intersections to the, uh, to, uh, to Route Three, um, improved, to improve, to, for most importantly, to improve safety. We're hoping that Mass DOT funds it like they're supposed to in two thousand and twenty-eight, and in three short years, we'll be, um, having different ways to have to drive and not be happy about those.
Right.
So, please stay tuned.
Changes hard.
Yep.
I, I realize this isn't on the agenda, but as you mentioned, the plowing, um, I just wanted to bring this to the attention of the board, as well as the, the public. We, um, we talked about the plowing of private roads at length for the last two years, probably longer than that, but specifically the last two years. Um, we had two meetings about the plowing of public roadways, the first being a regular meeting, the second being a public hearing. That public hearing took place on October eighth, twenty twenty-four. In that meeting, we heard from many residents, we ended up with a very long, um, vote that included providing Post Court and Cobb Avenue plowing for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five winter season, with the stipulation that they must move the fences in the right-of-way by October first, twenty twenty-five, or forfeit winter maintenance in the future. I know we all received a letter, um, recently from residents on Cobb Ave with their concerns. Um, I believe you said you were out with Sean earlier.
Sean and I went out today, um, I wanted to be able to see it, I guess, and be more familiar with it, because I knew, I thought it would come up this evening, and I, and I'm not as familiar with it as I want it to be. So I wanted to go out, and it was like we were driving in an ice cream truck. As soon as we parked that town truck, everybody-
Everybody came out.
It was unbelievable, it was-
Maybe you should have brought an ice cream truck.
It was amazing, li- listen, if that's all it took, that's all, I, I would've, I would've brought a box.
Town meeting with ice cream trucks, that might work.
So, um, you know, what we tried to explain to a handful of residents, um, today on Cobb was, um, you know, the board's not trying to be punitive at all. Um, the, the challenge we have, uh, is these roads are narrow. They frankly weren't built to have, to have homes on them in the wintertime, uh, typically. And we wanna try to be flexible. There may be some, you know, the, some of the residents had some thoughts and ideas about how we can, uh, try to get to the goal of having, uh, areas on the sides of the road for snow storage, um, and without risking the damage of, 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 in this case, a poly fence. And, and they're gonna talk amongst themselves, and Sean and I are gonna talk, and we may come back to the board. We may have, we may have something that i- is, will, at least on Cobb Ave, potentially, um, be an alternative that, that, that would be functional. Wouldn't be ideal, and, and again, it, what it will do is, uh, some, some, some residents on the roads are gonna say, well, what about me? The other road that we, we went down today was, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm gonna blank, you mentioned just now-
Post Court?
Post Court is, the problem with Post Court is that, that road is narrower than the other, the fence is closer to the road.
Cause it's a right-of-way, it's not even a road, really.
Yeah, there's just really, there's no-
Series of easements, I think.
There is, there is really not a, not an alternative but, but to move that fence if they want that road pl- plowed this winter. So-
If I recall from this meeting, it's the fence actually belongs to someone who lives on Main Street, which complicates the issue even more. So the fence is along Post Court, but the people who live at that house actually have egress on Main Street.
Yes.
So the people who own the fence aren't really motivated necessarily to move the fence because it doesn't affect them. So it's a complicated issue. But again, we're not just picking on Cobb Ave and Post Court. We had stipulations for Meadowbrook and Potbury and Bradford and all these other roads that they had to make some changes, and they have. So it just may be something that I'll have to look at again.
Yeah, most everybody, I think, is, most everybody is willing to, um, you know, cooperate and, and try to, try to address the situation. You know, I think Cobb is a little bit unique because it's down the nook and it's such a narrow pathway, and, uh, because of some of the, um, frontages on the other si- on, on the opposite side of the road of the fence, there may be some opportunities there to, uh, get created with where we put the snow, if we do get snow this year.
So will we have this on a future agenda to discuss, maybe in October?
If, if the board, I guess from my point of view, um, we certainly can, if the board wants to bring it up and make it that formal. If you, if the, if, if it's-
Or we can just get in the-
I mean, if they follow the policy, right? But if they follow the policy, we don't need to vote.
No, I mean, I, it's, so, so, you know, Cobb Ave is looking for relief. If, if the board wants to, and we can put this on an agenda so you can formally vote on it, give, you know, give, um, the interim superintendent of Streets, Streets and Parks and I a little bit of flexibility to work with the residents, to try to find an alternative that, that satisfies Sean, without making, you know, without formally coming back to the board, happy, you know, either, whatever, whatever preference the board has.
I think you probably don't need to vote from the-
I think the goal is to get to everyone's safety, right?
I don't think, I can't do it tonight, but I, um, and we can-
I would say just do your work, do what you guys come, need to come up with, and then let us vote.
If, if, let's put it this way, if this is an area where they can't, there are roadways that would like to be plowed that don't adhere to the agreed-upon policy, then it would require a vote. Because we already said you're forfeiting it.
I think you've already voted, I mean, if, if the-
We forfeited it, I'm just saying, if they, if, if they are saying, we want you to reconsider-
We would ask them to come to the board and say-
They'd have to do that.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm with you.
And I would like to, I think we had talked earlier, is I would like to look at the release of liability, or what the possibility is to that if we did do it with stipulations.
Yes, so one of the things that we talked about, you know, there are overhanging limbs on, on Cobb that we would need cut back. They'd have to, they'd have to widen a, a bit of the, the road, or at least the, um, the shoulder on, on one of the, on the opposite side of the road from the fence. Uh, Selectman, Alkenbright, made a great point of, of trying to get some sort of a formal release from the fence owners that if, if, um, during winter maintenance, the fence is damaged by a town vehicle, that, you know, it would not need to be at the expense of the town. I think that makes a lot of sense, and we, and I, and they seem to be very willing to do something like that. It's just, you know, again, it's a, it's a challenging area where the trucks, you know, it's plowed now by a pickup truck, so we can't go any smaller.
Right.
Um, the truck has to back up the entire length, and from what I understand, in the past, when we had some big snowstorms and some icy roads, we had to actually have, you know, backhoes and loaders tow the truck back up the hill. They have to back down the road when they're salting because of the ice. So it's, um, you know, it's, it's not from a lack of effort from Streets, Streets and Parks. They're trying to do whatever they can to, to provide the winter maintenance and support that we can. But those areas, in some cases, are very challenging.
Yeah, I mean, I think if, unless we have to look at the policy or make exceptions, I don't, I don't think we need it.
Okay, great.
All right, any other Selectmen comments?
No, I don't think so.
Next regular meeting is September ninth, twenty twenty-five. Kim, do you wanna do the motion to adjourn and recess?
So, uh, move to adjourn open session to recess to executive session, not to return to open session, will be in room two oh three, to, for the purpose of conducting strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel and, sorry, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. That's town administrator.
Yep, second.
All those in favor, roll call, Eric, I.
Missy, I. Missy, I, sorry.
All right.
Everything executive has a roll call, guys.